Good evening. I'll call the word of the public hearing and begin with the common council of the city of Ole Miss, New York has scheduled a public hearing for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of the Ole Miss municipal building. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input on proposed local law 1-2025 to authorize the city of Ole Miss to override the tax levy limit. For more information or for a copy of the proposed legislation, please contact the common council office at (716) 376-5635 or visit www.cityofoleand.org. So at this time, this is a public hearing, which means the only item to address is going over to 2% tax cap. So at this time, I will invite any members of the public to approach the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and this will, again, in regards to overriding the tax levy limit. Anyone? Anyone? Okay, at this time, I'll call public comment. Public hearing closed. The next one starts at 6:05, so I've got to wait. There will be a public hearing on Monday, April 8th, 2025 at 6:05 PM in the council chambers of the Ole Miss municipal building for the purpose of discussing the following: To amend the water rates per section 27-22 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Ole Miss to raise water rates 5.04%, as well as amendments to the commercial and industrial water rate structures. For more information, please visit www.cityofoleand.org or call the common council office at (716) 376-5635. Okay, so this is in regards to, we're only adjusting water rates, all right, not sewer rates. So at this time, I will invite any members of the public to approach the podium. Please state your name and address as it regards to this public hearing. Anyone? Anyone? Okay, this time, I'll call that closed.
The first place or the second place?
It works out or it works not.
I'll call together, call to order the finance committee meeting for Tuesday, April 8th. Let the record show that Alderman are present. Approval of minutes from previous committee meetings Tuesday, April 1st and Thursday, April 3rd. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Under unfinished business, we actually are finished with this. We will be discussing, we will go over the budget 2025-2026 in regular meeting. Anything to, okay? New referrals for consideration? We have none. Committee reports? We have none. I make a motion. We adjourn.
Sir.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
I should...
I don't know.
Maybe we have a public hearing. Public hearings, you try to stagger them.
Six, 601, 602.
I don't remember that answer. Is that five minutes?
We're hopeful.
We can always start with one, just can't start where we're at.
Okay, we've discussed this. This is a long five minutes.
Call the word of the committee of the whole for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, 6:15 PM. Let the record show that all Aldermen are present. First, we have an authorization to place a bench in Lincoln Park. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, John. I received a letter from Tricia Henzel, and she is requesting that we put a memorial bench in Lincoln Park for Kathy Merzak. Kathy Merzak was a longtime member of the community. She was the one who, for years and years, put flowers around the center monument there in Lincoln Park. She was on the beautification committee, and I think this would be a nice tribute to her to have a bench in Lincoln Park. So they will, it'll come from random memorials, and the location, and here says the location to be determined by the city. So if I'd like to move this forward, I'll do a resolution for the 22nd, authorizing the bench in Lincoln Park. If everybody's okay with that.
Comments, questions? All right, I'll make a motion to authorize. Could I get a second? Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next, we've got PL 41-25 by Mayor Iliot to establish the standard workdays pursuant to New York State and local retirement system regulations 315.4. Actually, we're waiting on some record of activities, so I'm going to make a motion to postpone to committee of the whole for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Could I get a second? Second by Alderman Benyon. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. PL 42-25 by Mayor Iliot to authorize the creation of capital fund 250 for vacant property registration and transfer funds from line item 3620.450 into a newly created capital fund. Mr. Mayor?
This is at the request of the, I'm sorry. I believe this is at the request of the code enforcement, so that the money can be transferred, so that it's in an account and not in the general, not stay in the general fund, or it ended here and have to go back into the fund balance.
So we're encumbering?
Encumbering, yes.
Okay. Encumbering funds for vacant property registration capital fund. Alderman Benyon?
What's the dollar amount currently in that line item?
Give the dollar amount in that line item for funds?
$2,000.
Can you confirm?
$2,000 is what we received for fees for vacant properties, and they didn't have a capital fund, so they just put it in that line item. And so they want to transfer the $2,000 they received as fees for the vacant property registration to your capital fund.
We good? Okay. Any other motion?
Thank you.
Motion's made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, PL 46-25 by Mayor Iliot to authorize the submission of the New York State Home Rule request to extend a hotel occupancy tax. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I received communication from Senator Morello's office and also Senator Sibley's office that the, we would have to, the bill that was passed is set to expire in September of '25. So this would mean to renew it for an additional two years. So we just want to make sure we're not getting behind that as we get this in on time and get it so it can be renewed for an additional two years.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion's made by Alderman Benyon, seconded by Alderman Forney. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. Next, we've got PL 41-25 by Mayor Iliot to establish the standard workdays pursuant to New York State and local retirement system regulations 315.4. Actually, we're waiting on some record of activities, so I'm going to make a motion to postpone to committee of the whole for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Could I get a second?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Benyon. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. PL 42-25 by Mayor Iliot to authorize the creation of capital fund 250 for vacant property registration and transfer funds from line item 3620.450 into a newly created capital fund. Mr. Mayor?
This is at the request of the, I'm sorry. I believe this is at the request of the code enforcement, so that the money can be transferred, so that it's in an account and not in the general, not stay in the general fund, or it ended here and have to go back into the fund balance.
So we're encumbering?
Encumbering, yes.
Okay. Encumbering funds for vacant property registration capital fund. Alderman Benyon?
What's the dollar amount currently in that line item?
Give the dollar amount in that line item for funds?
$2,000.
Can you confirm?
$2,000 is what we received for fees for vacant properties, and they didn't have a capital fund, so they just put it in that line item. And so they want to transfer the $2,000 they received as fees for the vacant property registration to your capital fund.
We good? Okay. Any other motion?
Thank you.
Motion's made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. PL 42-25 by Mayor Iliot to authorize the creation of capital fund 250 for vacant property registration and transfer funds from line item 3620.450 into a newly created capital fund. Mr. Mayor?
This is at the request of the, I'm sorry. I believe this is at the request of the code enforcement, so that the money can be transferred, so that it's in an account and not in the general, not stay in the general fund, or it ended here and have to go back into the fund balance.
So we're encumbering?
Encumbering, yes.
Okay. Encumbering funds for vacant property registration capital fund. Alderman Benyon?
What's the dollar amount currently in that line item?
Give the dollar amount in that line item for funds?
$2,000.
Can you confirm?
$2,000 is what we received for fees for vacant properties, and they didn't have a capital fund, so they just put it in that line item. And so they want to transfer the $2,000 they received as fees for the vacant property registration to your capital fund.
We good? Okay. Any other motion?
Thank you.
Motion's made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, PL 46-25 by Mayor Iliot to authorize the submission of the New York State Home Rule request to extend a hotel occupancy tax. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I received communication from Senator Morello's office and also Senator Sibley's office that the, we would have to, the bill that was passed is set to expire in September of '25. So this would mean to renew it for an additional two years. So we just want to make sure we're not getting behind that as we get this in on time and get it so it can be renewed for an additional two years.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion's made by Alderman Benyon, seconded by Alderman Forney. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And as referred to in tonight's regular meeting, make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. Call the word of the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Let the clerk, please call the attendance board.
Alderman Benyon?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Forney?
Here.
Alderman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
And President Crawford?
Here. Praise the God for the invocation of the Lord.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. My nations under my God, the Lord.
Reading correct of approval of minutes in the previous regular meeting?
The regular meeting of the Ole Miss common council was held on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Present, we're all in the proper opinion, Forney, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia. Alderman Panis, you're here.
Make a motion to approve the minutes in the previous regular meeting. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Forney. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. Committee reports on unfinished council business?
None.
Communications from the mayor?
Thank you. I received a resignation from David Lazek, Department of Energy. He will be moving on to, he took lateral transfer to another agency, so we wanted to thank David for, I believe he's been on a couple of years, and wish him well in his general assignment. I also want to report to the council that yesterday, myself, Brad Camp, and Senator McCall, we met with the Senator Nation and the president, president, and several other counselors down in Salamanque yesterday. And the outcome had been President Seneca and myself have agreed to work on this, work on this problem with the river. So we've agreed to cooperate and work together to try to come to a resolution on the problem at, so I just wanted to report that.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports?
None.
Proposed legislation and referrals?
PL 35-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 36-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 37-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 38-25 by President Crawford, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 39-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 40-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 41-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to committee of the whole Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 by council president. PL number 42-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to committee of the whole Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 by council president. PL number 43-25 by President Crawford, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 44-25 by President Crawford, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 45-25 by President Crawford, refer to regular meeting Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 for resolution by council president. PL number 46-25 by Mayor Iliot, refer to committee of the whole Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 by council president.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I get a second?
Sir.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. And I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to hold public comment after our resolutions. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carry. Finance and bills?
None.
Resolutions?
Resolution, local law number 1-2025, no PL. A local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law section 3C.
Okay, so we know that there's a 2% tax levy imposed by the state. This obviously is to override that. Any comments or questions? Saying none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Forney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
No.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes six ayes, one nay. Resolution 35-35, PL number 35-35, to amend the City of Ole Miss Code of Ordinances, section 16-2, subparagraph F, to amend code enforcement administrative fees.
We all discussed this in committees. Comments or questions? Saying none, could I get a motion? Motion's made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 37-25, PL number 37-25, to amend fees for the City of Ole Miss as reflected in the 2025-2026 budget.
Okay, we've discussed this too in committee. Comments or questions? Could I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion is made by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Forney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 39-25, PL number 39-25, to amend fees for the City of Ole Miss as reflected in the 2025-2026 budget.
Okay, we've discussed this too in committee. Comments or questions? Could I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion is made by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Forney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 38-25, PL 38-25, to rescind resolution number 23-25.
Okay, we talked about that last week in committees. Comments or questions? Saying none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Benyon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Um, excuse me.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution number 37-25, PL number 37-25, to amend fees for the City of Ole Miss as reflected in the 2025-2026 budget.
Okay, we've discussed this too in committee. Comments or questions? Could I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion is made by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Forney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
No.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution number 37-25, PL number 37-25, to amend fees for the City of Ole Miss as reflected in the 2025-2026 budget.
Okay, we've discussed this too in committee. Comments or questions? Could I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion is made by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Forney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution number 38-25, PL 38-25, to rescind resolution number 23-25.
Okay, we talked about that last week in committees. Comments or questions? Saying none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Benyon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Um, excuse me.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution number 39-25, PL number 39-25, to amend the water rates pursuant to section 27-22 of the City of Ole Miss Code of Ordinances.
Okay, we talked about this in committees. Comments or questions? Saying none, could I get a motion?
No motion.
Motion's made by Alderman Forney?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Um.
Excuse me. Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution number 39-25, PL number 39-25, to amend the water rates pursuant to section 27-22 of the City of Ole Miss Code of Ordinances.
Okay, we talked about this in committees. Comments or questions?
I want to report to the council that yesterday, myself, Brad Camp, and Sonya McCall, we met with the Seneca Nation and the President, President, and several other councillors down in Salamanca yesterday. And the outcome had been President Seneca and myself have agreed to work on this, work on this problem with the river. So we've agreed to cooperate, work together, try to come to a resolution on the problem at this point, and report that.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports?
None.
Proposed legislation and referrals?
PL thirty-five dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number thirty-six dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number thirty-seven dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number thirty-eight dash twenty-five by President Crawford referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number thirty-nine dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number forty dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number forty-one dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. PL number forty-two dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. PL number forty-three dash twenty-five by President Crawford referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number forty-four dash twenty-five by President Crawford referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number forty-five dash twenty-five by President Crawford referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. PL number, number forty-six dash twenty-five by Mayor Alio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to hold public comment after our resolutions. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. Finance and bills?
None.
Resolutions?
Resolution, local law number one dash two thousand twenty-five, no PL. A local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law section three C.
Okay, so we know that there's a two percent tax levy imposed by the state. This obviously is to override that. Any comments or questions? Saying none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Forney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
No.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes six ayes, one nay. Resolution thirty-five dash thirty-five, PL number thirty-five dash thirty-five, to amend the city of Olean code of ordinances, section sixteen dash two, subparagraph F, to amend code enforcement administrative fees.
We all discussed this in committees. Comments or questions? Saying none, could I get a motion? Motion is made by Alderwoman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-five, PL number thirty-seven dash twenty-five, to amend fees for the city of Olean as reflected in the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget.
Okay, we've discussed this too in committee. Comments or questions? Could I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion is made by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Forney. Will clerk please, please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-five, PL thirty-eight dash twenty-five, to rescind resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Okay, we talked about that last week in committees. Comments or questions? Saying none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Benyon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Panis?
Um, excuse me, Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-five, PL number thirty-nine dash twenty-five, to amend the water rates pursuant to section twenty-seven dash twenty-two of the city of Olean code of ordinances.
Okay, we talked about this in committees. Comments or questions? Saying none, could I get a motion? Motion is made by Alderman Forney?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson. Will clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number forty dash twenty-five, PL number forty dash twenty-five, budget two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I get a second? Seconded by Alderman Forney, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. I'm going to make a motion to amend resolution forty dash twenty-five to include the final total budget amount of twenty-nine million, one hundred forty-seven, four hundred and sixty-two. Twenty-nine, one forty-seven, four sixty-two. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. All right, so here is our, our final fiscal budget as presented. Comments or questions? Saying none, can I get a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderwoman Forney, I'll go ahead and second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon? Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
No.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
The resolution passes five ayes, two nays. Resolution number forty-one dash twenty-five, PL number forty-one dash twenty-five, this has been postponed. Resolution number forty-two dash twenty-five, PL number forty-two dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderwoman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon. Resolution, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from line item three-six-two-oh-point four-five-zero to newly created capital fund number two-five-zero.
Okay, just talked about this. Comments or questions? Saying none, will clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number forty-six dash twenty-five, number forty-six dash twenty-five, to authorize the submission of a New York State Home Rule request to establish a hotel occupancy tax.
Okay, so this. Comments or questions? Saying none, will clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
Mr. Clerk, you had a sponsors from the city of Olean, right?
Yes, I did. It was Alderman Benyon, moved by Alderman Benyon and seconded by Alderwoman Forney.
Confirm. Okay, so before we open up public comment, I asked our city attorney to, we collectively have asked the city attorney to prepare a statement and hopefully try to clear up what the role of public comment is and help outline some of the rules.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
No.
How about now?
No.
Better?
John has the question.
Hello?
No.
Uh, hi?
That's right.
Okay. My name is Bridget Marshall, I'm the city attorney for Olean, and I apologize I was not here at the last meeting, but I heard there was some excitement. So based on that, I'd like to make it clear that it's not a legal right to speak at a regular council meeting at a public hearing, it is. With that said, the city's policy is that they like and welcome the public to speak, but they would like you to follow the rules, which are state your name and address, the purpose you're here to speak about, follow the timeline, and refrain from using profanity, and try to treat everybody with respect. Thank you.
All right, so at this time, and just to clarify, because I did receive some, some emails of concern, as the council, when we have a large crowd, has a habit of reducing the time from five minutes to three minutes, although two, section two dash sixty outlines what our rules are and stipulates, section two dash sixty-two allows the council to change those rules. And so, at this time, what I would do is I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. At this time, I would make a motion to amend the rules for public comment, to limit the comment from five minutes to three minutes, and to prohibit the use of profanity, defamatory, and threatening language. Could I get a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried.
I'll oppose that.
Okay, good. Thank you. At this time, I will ask the clerk to please read the public comments statement.
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them if they're asked.
Okay, at this time, I will invite members of the public to...
Did you want to ask us if we get some...
Oh, I apologize, I didn't jump in the gun here. I apologize. Would any of the members of the county council like to make a statement at this time?
Yep.
Alderman Robinson?
Thank you. I'll try to make this brief. I prepared something that I wanted to say, basically to residents of the city of Olean and our neighbors, on things that have been happening lately within our community. First, the entire county council comprises of professionals with the exception of one who is retired. We basically volunteer our time and services to the city through an election process that some use as their voices. But once you're in this position, you as a council member learn that what roles and responsibilities we have as a council does not match with what people believe our responsibilities are. Seeing some comments like, quote, "All you have to do is create a PL and fill in the blank," end quote, as if creating a PL is going to save everything. People aren't considering that we can create all the PLs and laws we want, but implementation and enforcement is not the role of the common council. There are comments and misconceptions posted throughout social media that are shared among the same small group of people. Unfortunately, a lot of those people have nothing better to do than to spread those misconceptions for the betterment of their own agenda. The city has real issues that need to be managed, from management of the city's budget, rising costs and inflation, salary increases, industrial improvements, and the sewer overflows that have seriously affected our neighbors. But the primary focus over the last couple of weeks has been on one individual that seems to have stolen the show. The actions of that individual stole the topic away from what is really important to the city of Olean residents and our neighbors downstream. That one individual caused more focus to update internal policies with public meetings, as you've seen earlier. That one individual brought ice to this committee. While it's been noted that this one individual did have good intentions, a poor choice of timing on his part is what ultimately made his sacrifice. And while some have pried in injustice, as I'm not sitting here watching the whole entire thing take place, I was present last week. I'm an independent black man living in an area where I'm a super minority, and I'll be damned if I would allow an incident to happen to another black man as if I did not agree with the circumstances. Anyone that wants to challenge me on that particular topic can feel free to come talk to me, and I will gladly discuss. I'm tired of getting lumped in with the nonsense that exists within this city building and the lack of communication on part of the city. When there is misleading information presented to the public, the city should correct it or at least put some sort of correspondence out to correct these falsehoods. Why do we let them fester? This is not the heartbeat of the city. This is not the city that I've lived in for the past thirty years, and this is not the city that I claim as home. This is the actions of a few individuals, most are non-residents, that are fueling these small fires. We are better than this, and as a community, we need to do better. And lastly, I'm going to say, I need to do better as a leader in this community, but I cannot do it alone. Thanks.
Anything else? Alderman McCall?
So I wanted to speak a little bit too, to the process of public comment. I said I want to speak to the process of public comment just a little bit. We value the comments that our residents bring and those who are our neighbors. It is our goal to offer this opportunity, and I think there's a misunderstanding that our silence means something other than, it is an opportunity for the public to speak. It's not a dialogue, it's not a discussion, it's not a time for us to agree or disagree. So looking at us and thinking, well, they're not saying anything, is simply a reflection that that is your time. That is not my time to agree or disagree with things. If you have specific things, I would say, reach out to your aldermen, reach out to us as a whole. If you email us all, you can email us as aldermen, right? All of our contact information is up on the city website. Please contact us. If you have an issue specific to your ward, bring it to our attention. I think people who, who know us and have brought issues to us know that we do our best to bring that up and get resolution. Sometimes we can't get the resolution we would like, because our ability has a stopping point. And we recognize that, and we work closely with the mayor, with the department heads, but implementation is, is up to them. And then we reflect back what we've been able to find out. So I appreciate it. I would ask that constructive and informative comments and feedback are appreciative, right? And we appreciate those. We all took this job because we wanted to help Olean to move to a different place, a better place, a more helpful place, a more inclusive place for everybody, where everyone feels like they have a voice. And to that end, I, I think that there are times that we have done better than others, but I think that we all collectively, that's what we attempt to do. So thank you, and thank you for those of you who have come and been respectful and offered us. I learned things as people have come up over the past few weeks, so I appreciate that. And on a completely separate note, I want to say that one of the things in my ward is that we encompass the downtown district. So I have been working with the down, a number of the downtown businesses to try and see how can we increase foot traffic, because one of the things we've heard is that businesses, you know, they're, they're leaving. But we had the opportunity to work with, I've had it with a number of the businesses, and we're gonna, we've kind of put it out there, if you've seen on my alderman site. We're going to have a shop the block event for May third. We have four businesses that are either moving up to, or we have one new business that has moved to Olean, but Kaleidoscope, Olean Wellness Store, Two Sweet Desserts, and Colorit Creative will now be on the first block of Olean. And so come May third, we will have a welcome to the block. Come shop in the stores, enjoy the downtown, and I hope that it is one of many events and opportunities we will have to, to invite the, the public. We have a couple of other really fun things we're working on. If you have ideas, definitely send them to me. I started small with a few businesses, but the goal is to expand. And I want to thank all the businesses. I went to them because I'm putting together what is going to be an amazing gift basket that someone will win, that goes, and if you go to all four businesses, you get four opportunities. And every single one of the businesses that I went to, like, either gave me a gift certificate that day, or they gave me something and said, come back. So somebody will have an opportunity to win many very cool things from Olean, so.
Anything else from the council? Okay, so at this time, I will open up public comment. I will invite members of the public to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. And also, please direct your comments at the council, if the government body is... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn Wall, Little Valley. First of all, thank you, Sonya and Vernon, for your words. I appreciate those. I need to point out once again that on January twenty-eighth, it was announced that the city would add a page on the website to provide updates on progress in fixing the sewage discharge problem. Bill, I see that in the last week, you have started on that. You posted the two thousand and sixteen wastewater master plan, but I haven't seen anything yet about recent progress, like updates on when you're hiring a consultant for the lift station evaluation, or like a new full plan for preventing discharges. And I'd particularly like to see which catch basins that are plumbed into the sewer system instead of the stormwater system are also feeding into the three problematic lift stations. That's crucial information that you need in deciding which solution to pursue. I hope those are coming soon, Mr. Mayor. When we take leadership positions, whether casually or formally, we should expect two things. That when we make wise decisions, we'll get no praise for those, and that when we do mess up and make unwise decisions, there will be a lot of criticism. It's important that we listen to the criticism to help us become better leaders. For months, I've been watching your council meetings and have been amazed at how smoothly and concisely they're run. For many years, I was a union president and was on various boards of directors, and though I tried to run meetings well, I never quite achieved that level of efficiency. But, one of the things that comes with being a public official of any type is needing to listen to the public. Sometimes the comments have a concise point, sometimes they don't. Sometimes they express gratitude, sometimes they are critical. Sometimes they are profound, sometimes they are ludicrous. The important part is that the officials listen and make the person feel heard. Generally, I think the council's been good at that. I know there doesn't have to be a public comment period during council meetings, but since there is, some flexibility in procedures is often the wiser decision. At the March eleventh meeting, tribal councillor Clint Nephew was reading a letter from J.C. Seneca, the president of the Seneca Nation. The letter took a little more than five minutes to read, but when five minutes was up, the gavel in amplified five voice was used to try to stop him. This was a letter from the president of a sovereign nation that the city is negatively impacting. He had very important things to say that the council needed to hear. It was a very bad look to cut him off. And the rest of my speech will be read by the next person.
Christina Tong, Salamanca, New York. Then, at the March twenty-fifth meeting, you did decrease the time from five minutes to three minutes, a problem for those of us who made sure our remarks were just under five minutes. Then the last speaker came up, his name is Carlos. He had spoken earlier, he used maybe thirty seconds of his three minutes. Carlos came from, came up to the podium and was saying something about making a donation to the city, while taking coin rolls from a baked tray and putting them on the podium while he was speaking. He had spoken for just a few seconds when he was told to sit down. It should have been clear by that time that he had not been to one of these meetings before, that he didn't know the protocol, that English was not his first language, and that he was confused. While he was standing for several seconds at the podium before speaking, that would have been a good idea or a good time to explain to him that he couldn't do it. He was given just eight seconds to comply, according to the video, and then the police officers were called. He was already turning to leave the podium at that time. By the time he reached his seat, they were there, and he was not causing any disturbance. But the police officers did create a disturbance. It was a very heavy-handed approach, when some flexibility and understanding would have been more appropriate, especially since he was somehow expected to know he couldn't speak a second time. I haven't been here that often, but I know Glenn has. He's been here over twenty of these meetings. We didn't know that it was not posted anywhere, and we can't find it. Mentioned in the preamble or to the public comment section. Now, these are Glenn's words. "I was kicking myself all the way home for not physically intervening immediately on his behalf." Again, I wasn't here that day. I did watch the video, and it was very disturbing. And I have it from two reliable sources, that there was no intention of an arrest, just an escort out of the room. Yet the police were allowed to arrest him without any vocal objections from the council. To make matters worse, there were about fifteen Olean High School interact club students and their social studies teacher here to observe the meeting. They had asked me to speak to them about the sewage issue that Thursday. They wanted to watch at the meeting, and then at the next meeting, perhaps speak about the issue. What lessons did they learn that night? Will they feel comfortable to speak at future meetings? So to summarize, inflexibility and impatient, impatience led to some erroneous acts at the March twenty-fifth meeting. And those actions hurt one of our community members, as well as enraged many people, people's sense of fair play. Let's make sure that this was an anomaly and not a trend, and move ahead, working to solve this city's many issues.
Just before I start, I just wanted to thank you guys for what you mentioned today. It was very important that you said that, so I appreciate that. My name's Clint Nephew, I'm a Seneca Nation councillor. I was at the meeting with the mayor and the council people that were there, so I appreciate that. The one thing that I, I wanted to mention was that, you know, the president from the Seneca Nation, J.C. Seneca, is going to be sending out a letter for those here in the audience, kind of pointing out the, the attention that needs to be taken. Letter is going to be sent in by the mayor as well, directing that their consultation and addressing the issues that are there. The letter from the president and the nation will be addressing the need for assistance, so that's going to be going in, so it's kind of, you know, kind of mirroring that as well. Also with that is, is we, we discuss DEC and EPA involvement and where that needs to go as well. So we just wanted to update that. The second part that I really wanted to talk about was involvement, and when we talked about... And when we talked about discussion and listening to people, that's part of our job. I have another counselor here, Tina Abrams, from the Allegheny Territory. I wanted to mention Deb Jimmerson, who's actually one of our elders from the territory, had called me, and her concern was everybody in here. Her concern was acts of violence that could occur. And when we talked a few different times, her concern was people getting arrested and really losing steam on what the message is. And ala chaos that occurs, the message is, we want action. And it's not about violence, it's not about screaming and yelling or an arrest, it's about actions. And, you know, really, hearing that from our community and for where you guys sit, it's the same message. And without yelling about it, it's, people want action. That's what it is. And when Deb and I spoke, I want to give her a lot of credit, because when she told me, she was very passionate about it. And when you hear that, that's what everybody wants, is action. And they don't want fluff, they don't want talk, they want to see it, they want to feel it, they want to know it, and they want to hear it. But they want to hear it from here and here. And I think that that's what's really important. The last thing I'll leave you, I know I have thirty seconds, I don't want to get gavelled. So, the one thing I'll leave with this is that it is important to hear things. And I think, when we came in, I can tell you what hurt a lot last week, was when the arrest occurred, it really bothered me to see that you guys had undercover police here. And I took offense to that, to be honest with you, because I had felt that that was directed at me as a Native American, because we had the issue with what was going on here. I'm just telling you the truth. Would the undercover police officers have been here if a lot of Native Americans weren't here the week before? It's a tough thing to think about. It wasn't the Carlos issue, because he wasn't here for Carlos, and they weren't here for that. But the week prior, there was about ten to fifteen Native Americans who voiced their concerns. That hurt me here. And it made me think, it's something for this council to think about.
My name's Barbara Disgant. Am I speaking loudly enough? Softly, okay? And I live in Hinsdale, New York. And I'm speaking as a grandmother, and speaking to how important this is. I think Glenn and the others have done very well with the technical aspects, and I'm going to just deal with how it means. Good evening, and thank you for everybody here who's speaking for the river and all the creatures and communities in and around it. I speak today as a grandmother, and as such, I'm reminded it is my responsibility, as we all must feel, to insist on the preservation of a healthy environment for those who are here and for future generations, and with it the imperative duty that that mess be cleaned up. That's right, Grandma Barbara, or known to her three-year-old grandson as Grandma Babwa, says, "Clean up the mess and stop dumping it both here and on all who live downstream." All those beautiful flowers in so-called walkable Oleane can't mask the stench of this foul river and the shame of those who let it happen when workable solutions exist, which you've heard about, and should have been done years ago. Much as the flowers and roundabouts are lovely, first should come up cleaning up the messes. And with the resources that I know you have, I'm confident the cleanup and flowers can both happen. The river is a living organism, provides water and a home to thousands of organisms, big and small. Clean water delights the eyes and the senses. It provides refreshment, but how can you wave, let alone swim in it the way it is? The non-human creatures don't even have a choice, they're forced to swim in it with all the poisons. I felt nauseated when I heard of a gentleman here who on his kayak or canoe was confronted with gobs of stinky sewage here, right in his boat, downstream to pollute the waters below and poison the creatures, the soil, the water supplies of some. Much as I don't like to use the word abomination, I cannot think of a better word for it. I'm not going away, and the rest of us here are not going away, and I will not be silent. I'm going to spread the word and keep hounding you, perhaps ungraceful as it may be, until this is taken care of. The life of the river and all of our communities, including the community right here, of everyone's grandchild, of all creatures, great and small's grandchildren are at stake. I thank all of us who speak to this, and I thank the river which is giving so much. Thank you.
Oliver Kazmer, North Oleane. So, I'm coming in today to, again, support the nation and the water. I want to ask you guys this. I know there's many a people of faith on this council. How would you feel if anyone just desecrated your church? Absolutely put waste all over it, right? You would probably feel angry, you would probably want that to stop. The river is important to them. So, why are you poisoning it? This is unacceptable behavior. Last week, or last meeting, you proved that Oleane is an aggressor. That's how it's seen. We could talk about social media, which does have a powerful play. People talk, people spread things, yes, but that should not be pushed to the side. When people talk, dirty secrets get aired out. And as someone who's lived here my whole life, I know not all those comments on those social media posts weren't exactly wrong. You made Oleane look bad. You've had, again, 2001, they let you know, twenty-three years, many a different council people to figure this out, and all we are hearing is talk, and it's never seen... We're never seeing action. There's no transparency with the public. It's great that you have it on your city website, I'm gonna tell you, the city website is really not interface-friendly, or some people, straight up, do not have access to the internet. You need to actually start talking to your constituents. We don't know what's going on, and it's damn near impossible to figure out what's going on and keep updated. So, work on that. And please, accept the help from the Senacas. We shouldn't have to... They shouldn't have to beg for help. It shouldn't have to get this far, and it has sadly. You want to make Oleane beautiful, and you want to have people come here? Last meeting's incident, why would people come here? No one is going to come here. Talk about all the flowers you want, no one's coming here. Mr. Mayor Aliyah, you are the competent nominee on this council, you've been mayor for over a decade. This city has got worse under you. It just has. I wonder if it's worth it when you look at your family... I don't know how you look at your family with decisions that you've made. I don't know if the neo-Nazi group, the right-wing thinkers that I know you've attended meetings to backs up, but...
Please, turn your comments to the council, please.
Just stating. Do better. Really soul-search, because all of you need to do that.
My name is Emily Mellinger. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I'm here speaking about the water waste issue. I learned about this issue very recently, actually. I'm a student at the Pittsburgh University of Pittsburgh at Bradford. I learned about this issue in my poverty and society class. My poverty and society class. I'm here because I care deeply about the health of our communities, our water and our environment. I'm here because what happens in Oleane doesn't just stay in Oleane. What you allow to enter our river flows all the way downstream and into my hometown, Pittsburgh. And eventually, oh, sorry, the Allegheny River starts in Pennsylvania and New York, but it ends in Pittsburgh, which is my hometown, where it becomes one of the three major rivers that defines my city. What's... When sewage is dumped into the river here, it doesn't just disappear. It travels downstream, it carries toxins, pollutants, and people have no say in this matter. People don't know what's going on, we don't have a say-so in what you do with the water waste. People drink from fishing and live along this... Alongside the river. The water waste is severely affecting everybody that lives alongside it and that interacts with this water. It's not just Oleane, it's everybody along down in Pennsylvania and New York, the Seneca Nation, Pittsburgh. It isn't just about environmental harm, it's about environmental responsibility. According to the Department of Environmental Conservation records, there have been repeated sewage overflows from the Oleane system, particularly during heavy rains. Your aging infrastructure combines stormwater and sewage, and when overwhelmed, that untreated waste is just discharged directly into the river. That is not just bad policy, that is a public health risk for Oleane, Portville, Warren, Franklin, and yes, 159 miles away in Pittsburgh. It affects the water quality, it affects aquatic ecosystem, it affects people's lives. I know fixing this issue is not simple. I know it requires funding, engineering time, and commitment. We cannot keep delaying action, and we have to allow this... We cannot allow this kind of harm to continue. We have to invest in real solutions, upgrading the sewer systems, separating stormwater from sewage, and strengthening regulations and accountability. And just as importantly, we need transparency. The public deserves to know how often these overflows occur, and when, and what is being done to stop them, and what resources are being pursued to fund a change. Other cities have found ways to address this issue. If we care enough, so can we. I'm asking this council to lead, not someday, but now. I'm asking you to prioritize the health of this river and every person who lives alongside it. From Oleane all the way to the union of the Allegheny and the Monongahela down in Pittsburgh, I come from the city at the bottom of the river. I'm asking those of you at the top to please take care of our shared water and our shared future. Thank you.
Jessica Davis, North Oleane. I want to say thank you to Vernon and Sonya. When I get up here, I'm not attacking you guys personally, many of you people I know. Sonya and I have kids together, your husband is a teacher to my youngest, okay? I'm not saying you guys are not good people. Outside of here, you're really good people, and you sit on here and you have to do all the city's business. But last meeting was not the look Oleane wanted. It was not the look, and people of color in this community responded typical, typical. And I share with the nation council president or member, said, "It was almost like it was an intimidation." I didn't think that they were arresting anybody from the Seneca Nation, since the Seneca Nation is suing the city of Oleane to get the water situation taken care of. I didn't think that they would get sued. Was I shocked that a immigrant person who was here on his visa, who English wasn't his first language, was arrested by undercover police as he was attempting to sit down? Didn't shock me. Vernon, I sat in another city council meeting when you demanded that the mayor show you the police body, that you were getting targeted by one of the city's cops. People knew then that this... People have a problem with people of color in this community. But at the end of the day, it's about the water. It's about the water. And Oleane has had, and this goes to both sides, Democrat and Republican, we have had many people in the last thirty years I've been here, sitting in your seats. Why has nothing been done? You guys knew in 2001. And the water is not getting any better. And now, we're gonna get another five percent on top of the water bill that I already paid that I can't drink? It is your nickel and dime us to death, and I can't drink the water. They can't swim, or fish, or anything that they want to do in their own river. And the look of arresting the only black person, an immigrant, and a person who had his visa, until those who say, "He overstated his visa." Did he? Or did... Under the administration that we have now, was it simply stripped? Because over the weekend, the Secretary of State stripped all citizens from Sudan. And you know how they found out? On X. Social media is a thing, and the story's out there. Obviously, it's getting down to Pittsburgh. What's gonna take is people are gonna start getting sick, and they're gonna start suing the city for diseases that are because of the contamination. So, please, I'm not attacking you guys personally, I could not do your jobs, but I'm asking you guys to do it better.
If I could just use my position, just as a point of clarity, and just for the sake of information and sharing information, the city, obviously, we are collectively agreed to work with the Seneca Nation to continue to fight and address this problem. The city of Oleane has invested over thirty million dollars in its sewage treatment facility. We were mandated back long before any of us were here, right, to invest in a new sewage treatment plan. We just recently have increased the investment annually into our decrepit hundred-year-old road and sewer lines, $350,000 a year. So, I do want to, just for a point of clarity, stand up for that. Our predecessors were aware of this, could they have done more? Certainly. But what I hope is that bringing together the nation, along with ourselves here, we can try to beat the whatever 2042 timeline is, right? And try to remedy this once and for all. I know that's our... Certainly, our objective. But I do want to just offer that as a point of clarity. Additionally, it's another point of clarity to suggest, Mayor, confirm for me, we have not had a discharge in how long?
June of '24.
Okay, so, June of '24. Now, the rainy season is coming upon us, okay? But I also, just as a point of clarity, I'm not excusing, all right? I'm not saying it's okay. But I also, for those of you who may not know, this isn't a daily occurrence. This is something that we want to remedy, that we want to fix, especially as May and June are coming up, okay? But I do want to just, as a point of clarity, offer that, thank you. Please.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you. My name is Polly Hanson. I'm from Friesburg, New York. I teach in Salamanca, and I spend quite a bit of time outdoors, enjoying recreationally around the area, including on the Allegheny. Is the city of Oleane, common counsel, part of the problem or part of the solution? Yes, rain and runoff contribute, but this sewage leakage isn't happening all over, mainly in Oleane. Yet, there has been purposeful inaction. Why? If it's a lack of options, several have been proposed, and none have been followed up on. Is it a lack of support? Many people have been advocating for this issue to be fixed for years. Support has obviously been rejected for years, until tonight. Is it a lack of funding? No. Grants could be written, and the Seneca Nation has offered assistance. Not only could grants help to financially address the problem, but the city is spending $250,000 a year to be compliant in addressing this problem with the DEC. Think of how many years, at a quarter million dollars a year, that this has happened. This is not fiscally sound. Do the Oleane taxpayers realize that their dollars are being wasted, and they still have this crappy problem? This is happening year after year. I wonder what the Oleane residents feel about water rates being raised for revenues, when so much money is being paid out for a perpetually unresolved issue? It just doesn't add up. Is it a denial of the problem? No. Everyone admits it is a problem. City residents have been complaining for years, many articles have been written, there was even money spent in 2003 to do a study of the storm basins. It could be a lack of leadership, or a lack of accountability of how this purposeful inaction impacts far more than city residents. Or is there some other reason? With this issue alone, you and years of past councils are not being good stewards of your community, fiscally, ecologically, or hygienically. How does the city council benefit by not fixing this problem? I'm glad to hear tonight that you are finally willing to work with the Seneca Nation on this problem. I look forward to specific details and not just a general statement. Enough with purposeful inaction. Actions always speak louder than words. Please act in the best interest of all of our communities. Thank you. Thank you.
My name, Chris Jesse, 213.5 Tompkins, here in Oleand. I come to you with my heart open, not for you. No sympathy for your indignation, or your blame for Carlos Andres, who was very polite to you. More polite than I have been, more polite than I will be, more polite than many of us here, because we are outraged because of the inaction. Mayor has claimed that his purpose for 2025 are resolutions. Approximately $4 million prioritized for the beautification of Oleand parks, despite the outrage and indignation expressed in litigation by my brothers, Seneca, for I am shocked, as well as American, my father, shocked, Cherokee, died for your war senselessly. I am a citizen and a resident here, listening to my neighbors, we are not your enemy, we are your neighbors. And you have prioritized the beautification of parks, where the remaining citizens of this town dwindling quickly. Why? You would anticipate attracting more people, they're listening too. We can't afford to leave. But we're not going away. Blaming Carlos Andres. I'm appalled. You should have a proposal that would allow me to yield the balance of my time to the next person.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Joslin, I was here last month, and I said I would be back. I want to thank the council. I can see on your faces that these are difficult comments to hear. I know it makes you feel unappreciated for the work that you're doing. But understand that in the communication process, our role is to continue to keep focus on this issue. I know that the gears turn slowly, I'm very pleased to hear that there was a meeting with the President of Seneca Nation. I'm very pleased about that. Again, the role of the group that is formed is to continue to keep attention on this issue, because I know that you have a lot of issues on your plates. So please understand our role when you take into consideration the comments that are made here, and the fact that we keep returning. I too was very concerned when I saw the video about what happened to Carlos last time. I think that some of that may have occurred due to the tensions that build over the passion behind the speakers who come to this podium. What I saw when I looked at that video was that other speakers, not Carlos, were quite verbose and sometimes insulting, perhaps unnecessarily, perhaps because they're just frustrated. What it seemed was that Carlos bore the brunt of that, I was not here. But I just wanted to step up and say that as a teacher for 32 years, I saw a lot of miscommunication that happened, both between teachers and students, between teachers and administration. And when we're trying to bring together people of all sorts, we have to remember that we each have a role to play, and not try to take things too personally. I really appreciate that all of you are here to listen, I really appreciate how much eye contact some of you made, some of you have not. I watched you when other people were up here speaking, and it really matters that people feel listened to. So thank you, and thank you for taking time with us during these public comments. Thank you for the opportunity. He has a role to play as well too, and I appreciate that you're here visibly. I think it was the lack of transparency with the officers who were not. So thank you, I'll yield the rest of my time.
My name is Elaine Digiligo, I'm a resident of the city of Oleand, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I'd like to address the Carlos Andres arrest. I really only have one word, it was shameful, shameful for our city, shameful for the miscommunication that wasn't quickly cleared up. The charges were dropped, it seemed pretty clear to me that this man, a homeless man, came all the way from Salamanca to Oleand because he felt so strongly about this sewage issue that a homeless man came here, somehow made his way here to speak, and yeah, he was cheeky. I guess that's the word that seems to, he was sarcastic. But come on, people, have a thicker skin than that. I mean, I have seen some of these meetings before, and I have seen people get... Last week I saw the mayor be called a monster. He was nowhere near as combative or disruptive as any of those people. And the only thing that in my heart, and I hate to say it in respect to what you said, I completely disagree. I think if he had been a white man in a suit, educated, it would not happen. So Carlos inspired me to come here tonight because I was embarrassed. I live two minutes away from here, and I didn't come even though I'm revolted by the thought of sewage floating down the river. And when you work in public office, when you're a civil servant or a politician, you're gonna be in situations, and it's imperative to you, to the police, to the council, to the politicians, to de-escalate, not to escalate problems. You escalated by your inaction, by not standing up and saying, no, that's not what I meant. I hit the gavel, but I didn't want him to be arrested, and pull it back. You need to read your audience and take into consideration constraints such as cultural differences when you're working with the public, language issues. You walked back to a seat, you gave the man no grace, and you ruined his life. And as a city of Oleand resident, it makes me embarrassed, and I believe he deserves an apology. And then the other thing, obviously, is fix the problem. I worked in a place that had studies after studies after studies, you know what to do. You know what needs to be done, you don't need to spend more money on studies, just fix it. Get a plan, put it in place, spend as much as you can, and do it. And quit arresting people, because you don't like what they say, and you're tired because you've been sitting here listening to people all night, and you've had it up here and you want to go home. I understand, but we can do better.
My name is Ashley Tilly, I live here in Oleand. I'm not gonna lie, I was extremely nervous and still am to come here, because I've never been to one before. And I've been shown what happens when you don't know what you're doing. You're not shown grace, I understand it is my responsibility to have an idea of what needs to be done and what my behavior and my decorum should be. But as far as high school students coming to be educated on how to take an active part in their government, their local government, where they actually can make a difference, and it can trickle upwards. Or residents like me that up until now have trusted the election process to vote for people that have my best interests in mind. And unfortunately, that seems to not be the case, that we can just idly trust anymore. I was scared to come here because I didn't know if I would do something wrong. I would like to vocalize that as someone that has worked with many different people, in many different positions, as someone that's worked with special needs children, as someone that has been in violent altercations, I have every single time had to sit there and be the bigger person, and learn how to de-escalate a situation. I had to sit there and learn how to deal with the confusion, and how to sit there and see what the need was behind the behavior. And honestly, watching that video, I didn't see a behavior coming from Carlos. I saw a behavior coming from elsewhere, and I was embarrassed. My town that I love so much, that I volunteer for, that I have grown up with, that I call my hometown and my children call home, has been an embarrassment for many reasons, and been making them news for things that have been all too common lately in this country. It embarrasses me, and it shames me. And I would very much like to be part of the solution. I'm asking for transparency in everything, so that we can work together. I understand that your hands are tied to a certain point, you can't just ask for a million dollars and be given it, and we can magically fix the pipes. I understand that the roundabouts that people complain about are part of that solution, I understand that. But we need to come together, and to do that, we need to be able to communicate with all sorts. I took a college course where my first semester of college was learning how to communicate with different levels and different humans and different cultures. We need to do that, that needs to be a priority, that needs to be something you need to remember. I appreciate your hard work, I appreciate my fellow neighbors, and I would very much like to see my my community coming together instead of belittling and causing issues that just separate us further. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Alice Celeste, and I live in Randolph, which is part of lovely Cataragus County. I live here by choice, I'm here for the mountains, the water, the outdoors. I mean, this is lovely, a place to call home, I love to hike and swim and paddle and be part of it. And I'm appalled that the sewage is still an issue here in Oleand, I mean, I consider this an environmental problem, and many people for many years have been approaching it that way, saying, hey, you know, fix it. And I'm looking at this council going, why haven't they? So I'm wondering if you can't consider it an environmental problem, then consider it an economic problem. How much money you've spent, year after year after year? You've known for decades, this has been a problem. Polly pointed out, you've spent, you know, $250,000 that was mandated since, what, 2002? So that's like five and a half million dollars. And the problem is still here. I mean, if I was homeowner, I would think that I'm doing something wrong. You've had help, it's been offered, and I came to a meeting, not the last one, but the one before, when for the first time I heard that there was a, what, $50,000 gonna be spent to hire a consultant. Well, that seemed like a reaction, not an action, and I'm glad you're having a meeting now. And I'm glad you're maybe taking help from your neighbors that have been trying for years. But the fact that the problem still exists means that Oleand hasn't done its due diligence. It's allowed people downstream to be impacted. It has... This isn't a time for not reactions, but solid action. Get the website up running that you promised, I mean, the page on your website, let us know exactly what the outline is with working with the nation. What funds you're looking for, what grants you're writing. I mean, take something that really says to me that the problem is important to this community. You should want a legacy that you're the council that fixed the problem, right? I mean, that not just push it down for the next group of people, because obviously you ended up with it in your lap, probably not by choice, I mean. But please, take time, because this is a we problem, an us problem, and we're here to help. So let us know what we can do, and put it on your website, what you're doing, and we'll be supportive. Thank you for your time.
I am Dylan Kramer, I was born and raised in Pennsylvania. And it is an instance that I was told about when I was younger. And, you know, being young, being a kid, you don't think about this stuff. And then you get older, and, you know, time goes by, and I think it's one of those things that you should care about as a community, you know, all in a whole. Like everybody said here, we're all here together, trying to deal with this problem. All these people have said some great things, some great points. Just think about what it's doing to everybody, not just us, but the things in the world around us that it affects. I mean, it has an impact on a lot of things. If you think about it, like, I'm 22 years old, it's been going on longer than I've lived, like, that's a long time, like... I just think it's one of those things that shouldn't be messed around with, like a lot of people said here. It's all about the action, it's not, it's not about what we're saying here in this room, it's about doing it, actually doing it. I mean, it's affecting everybody, and I co-invent business, I deal with water all the time. It's affecting my business, it's affecting other people's lives, their businesses, their communities. It spreads longer down the road. Like, it's not just here, it's everywhere, you know? And I just think that's very important for me to come up here and state that, that action should be dealt with. That's all, thank you.
It's okay, let's go ahead, okay. My name is Mary Alice Buffington, I reside in Oleand, New York. I'm not a lifer here, but I've lived in Allegheny and Oleand for 25-plus years. I appreciate what you do, because a lot of you don't get the recognition that you could do, I couldn't do what any of you do. So I do appreciate it. I think there's room for improvement everywhere, in myself and probably everyone in this room. The video from a few weeks ago was disturbing, and I feel like disturbing to some of you. Whether you can admit it or not, I feel like it was. And people all over the world, all over the United States thought, and it was a little embarrassing. However, when Carlos did approach, obviously, English was not his first language, and he kind of didn't know what to do. I don't even know if I know what I'm doing, because I have nothing prepared. But the point is, I feel like in your laws that you have, and I know you have them for a reason, maybe you could take the time, when you all have some time, to amend that. When you realize that somebody is maybe not intellectually where they should be, or their language is a barrier, or something to that knowledge, or there may be some disability or different ability, that you might be able to change that and address that, so this wouldn't happen again. Do you understand where I'm coming from? I mean, I know you can't answer me, but I feel like that's a really important thing. I've worked with special needs adults and children for a long time. I would love to volunteer my time, if anyone would be interested in helping you reword some things or readdress some things, so that that wouldn't happen for Carlos, for me, for you, for anyone. And on that same note, piggybacking off, I know the sword, it's an issue, I live in Oleand, I get it, and nobody wants their taxes to go up, and I don't, and I don't think anyone in this room does, but we also want to fix it. And then how do you cancel those out? Grants are an issue, there's things that can be done. I know you're doing a lot of great things, but if you could tell us what you need from us, the public, really, there's a lot of people who would love to help. I know you have committees and you have meetings, I understand that, and I mean, that's a lot of work, but like, if you really, really want the public's help, I think there's a lot of people, good people, solid people in Oleand, who really want to help you, and also from like the neighboring areas. So just something to consider, I know you do have some things in place, but just let us help, we really want to. Because we want to make Oleand better, just like you all do. Oleand's beautiful, Oleand has a lot to offer, that's why I stayed here. My kids are done with school, I didn't have to stay, I chose to stay, and I'm proud that I stayed. But I want to also help, so it's just something to consider. Thank you for your time.
Ya wes keno sugrego, in my language, that means I hope you are well. I'm thankful that the orders of the administration and how the meeting should be conducted. Are you cutting me off? Are you cutting me off?
I'm sorry.
The way the rules were stated at the beginning of the meeting was thankful, and I appreciate the peacefulness in this room today compared to two weeks ago. And it just shows how passionate everyone is up and down the river about this issue. Two weeks ago, I mentioned that my colleague, Clinton nephew, and I were on the floors in Albany and met with the New York State DEC Commissioner, who told us that there was many tools in Olean's belt that they needed to use. With that being said, we also discussed the Administrative Order of Consent, which the DEC granted Olean and gave them till two thousand and forty-two to fix the issue with the water and sewer. That was unprecedented. In our conversation, we asked if that order can be modified, and I'm hoping for some good results, that yes, that order will be modified, and this soon can be fixed. I was in a meeting too, as well, with my colleague, with President J.C. Seneca, and hopeful that we can do something to help. At the same time, we're not going to do your job for you. There's things you have to do. There's funding out there. There's grants. And I understand that there's a consultant coming on, and whatever all this process is, it's taken too long, that we need immediate action. Maybe there's a way you can borrow the money with a stipulation that the grant is going to replace the repairs and the costs of repairing the sewage system. With that being said, I also have a role in the Cataragus County Planning Board, and we had our meeting last week, and I mentioned to them about the issue in Olean, and that has a potential to affect tourism in Cataragus County. We have a beautiful river, we call it O'Kio, great fishing area. It's been in many magazines how the Red House Tributary is great fishing for walleye and trout. And let's not ruin that. Let's think about our future generations. Let's act fast, swiftly. Let's get it fixed. Let's find the money somewhere, whether you have to borrow it or repay it with a grant, let's do it. We can't wait for consultants and grants and people that can help. We offer help. Take it and fix it. Please. Yowit.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Just a moment. Before I adjourn, I want to thank all of you for your passion, for your emotion, your comments, your feedback. Criticisms are not, it is meaningful to all of us, and we're all people who learn, and so thank you very much for coming tonight. With that being said, I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by all in favor. I have a question.